The FedWorks ever wants it to be sanctioned and so high school activities wants nothing to do with it, so I can see that all the time we're just gonna be paying more money.
I just barely looked at it too. I mean, I think it's good if you're trying to just get some outside funding. My only thing is that I would want you or Lou and Kelly, somebody would need to be in on that process, just because he's a coach but not an employee, so I mean, someone would have to be involved in that process, you know?
Right.
That's maybe my thought.
There's some grants.
But I have to read it some more.
That they talk about that are out there.
Yeah.
And there again, I don't know who you want or how you want to go about, you know, writing grants for an activity. So, I think there's a lot to consider and there are huge opportunities. You see some of these, some of these colleges now are giving out big scholarships for esports. And we have a student in esports that has been recognized nationally, so.
Right, I'm not to the extent that I just think that someone would need to be involved in that if they do, but yeah, I barely looked at it myself, so.
Could we get a breakdown again? I know years ago, we had a breakdown of all those activities that our schools do and what they cost and how they're funded.
Sure. Yeah.
I know that's a little bit of work, sorry.
Well, no, we can figure it out because that was some of the things we briefly touched on today. Just, you know, currently softball, baseball and track are sports that we don't charge admission. And we need to, I mean, in order to fund things. I'm having a tough time. I know people who walked into the football game and didn't pay because they could go behind, underneath the scoreboard or other areas and it really bothers me. You know, it costs us probably about $1,200 to host a football game. At the time, if you paint the field, about $600 bucks. Refs are $105 each a game, there's five of them, plus you pay mileage. And you have workers that you're paying, so.
Yeah, when they do it on purpose. When they come to the gate and ask how much it is and then drive away and then you see them walk in underneath the, on the north side when there is, or excuse me, the south side when there's nobody there, there's no fence anymore, so they just walk right in.
Yeah, and so, you know, we do need to.
I see a lot of it, you know, at our house, when we walk over there, you see all kinds of people parking and walking in right there that are going through either one of the entrances.
Yeah. So, I can do that, I can figure that out and come up with, you know, the sports that.
Would Teresa have some, I mean, would you two were working with the co-op expenses?
I think so.
Maybe have a lot of it that would, I mean, she'd have all the expenses there, I think, like the moisture.
Yeah. You know, and there's, I'm sure there's stuff that we gotta think of that is, has to be provided through the school. It's just that something to be provided, but when the spectacles come in, I am gonna pay a little bit.
Well, you said, there's other schools that are charging for baseball and softball and stuff, right? So, and track, so, yeah, why wouldn't we then?
Yeah, we, I think we have ways to do it a little bit better. You know, the way our field was set up, it's hard. Baseball, if they park on the side, they just got the car, they walk up to the fence and watch the game. Normally they get the people that drive in. I've been here, volleyball games, and people have come early if it's a junior high or a seed. We're sitting in the stands before we pay and they'll actually come down and pay us. That happens a lot in basketball or something like that, or, so, you know, it is what it is. So, that's, I think that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Prom. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Prom? Okay, I guess I would entertain a motion to accept Mr. Prom's activities.
I want to accept this report.
Okay, second?
All second.
Prom, the second is it? Prom, the second. Mr. Prom's activities directory report, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If you pass it.
That letter B, I think I inadvertently put it under that receive reports as opposed to, should be other items for discussion or possible board action. Just, I just noticed that now.
Okay, the district, you mean?
The budget.
Yeah, so, we'll go to letter B, we'll go to letter H now, and we'll just put that first.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Prom.
So, you guys had approved our school district budget at our regular August meeting. Zeta and I were kinda going through it a little bit again here last week and we found just a couple of discrepancies specifically in the area of special education where we had money allotted in there that covered salaries that were no longer, not necessarily needed, but they were just, they weren't categorized correctly, if I'm right with that.
Yeah, and like one of them was, the formula took staff members' total contract instead of her just salary. So, that brought it down 10 grand.
Yeah, so it was total contract including insured benefits and that kind of stuff, so, so with those couple of different discrepancies, we discovered it improved our budget by $21,000, so, just thought it would be worthwhile pointing that out and that way you guys can have an opportunity to re-approve that.
Now, is it those two, those two changes?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I would entertain a motion to.
Yeah, I'll say another thing too.
Okay.
I wanted to have the budget put in, but obviously you can tell it's not, but then once we found these discrepancies, I thought I'd just wait, because I'm not gonna put it in the system with, when you may have approved it yet. So, tomorrow or Friday or Monday or something, I'll put it in.
Okay. Okay, well, you entertain a motion to update our budget with the two changes.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated budget, 25, 26.
There's that, okay. Prom, the second is it? To update the budget with the two changes. I know why I'm gonna repeat this. You're saying that it's gonna be a $21,000 benefit to our.
Roughly, yes.
Roughly to our budget.
Yep.
Much easier to score than the other way, right?
Yep.
Okay?
Will you update, because I know you have the copy on the website, will you update that?
Yes, that will be updated as well.
So, that's up there for everybody to see.
Yep.
For us to see, okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
So, just, I can just give you the specific numbers, just, so it took that from deficit spending 152, 145 to 131, 101.
Did we get that number? Okay, any more discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor then of adjusting our Harvey Public School budget for the transition? Please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Okay, then we'll go to the pest control contract.
So, as I've been working on where we're at with this pest control thing, I did get, so far I've gotten one estimate and that was included in your board packet. That one is specifically with EcoLab. I've reached out to EcoLab, Plunkets, what's the other one that I had included in there?
North Central.
North Central out of Devil's Lake, and I also reached out to Orkin out of Bismarck. The only service contract proposal I've received so far is EcoLab. When Orkin comes in on Monday, I'm also gonna sit down and visit with them about what their contract would look like for us as well, and then I think from that point, we look at which one's gonna be a better fit. The one thing I do like about Orkin and visiting with them is, the particular branch comes out of Bismarck. It's a mom and pop shop, so to speak, and they were, when they come on Monday, they're bringing the whole crew just to see where we're at, where we need to go, so it sounded like they're committed to helping out. So, we'll see from there. I think it's worthwhile to look at a service contract with one of these groups. Obviously, we're gonna look at the cost effectiveness of both. For the time being, I think we're just gonna enter into a contract for the high school building itself, should the need arise, and maybe look at expanding that to the elementary as well, simply because of our proximity to the rural areas where rodents typically are more prevalent, so.
Okay, so you're asking no activity this time, you're just saying.
Correct.
You're not recommending anything at this point, you're not doing your research.
Correct.
Okay, so are you talking about just the school building, or are you looking at the bus sheds?
For the time be, time being, just the building.
We have EcoLab on the farm, so every building, they have traps and they're poison.
Yep.
And it's active on the outside.
Come up pretty regularly and.
Yeah, yeah, for many, many years.
Okay.
Because I think this was, they were in the kitchen now, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I visited with them. Plunkets couldn't get here until middle of October. North Central said, I talked to the gentleman, and he said he doesn't believe his son does rodents anymore, is what, or, this is on, I called the number he gave me to me. He didn't sound, he was gonna check with his son and call me back, but I haven't heard back from him yet. I.
Boy, they're sending us bills, they're better than.
I'm just saying. But, to me.
Why you have to check it out?
Right.
I should see if I can get an updated document, that's great.
Right.
Probably they don't wanna take new ones on.
Like I said, it's worth looking into, I think, just for everybody's peace of mind. Nobody loves mice by any stretch of the imagination, but we'll keep you guys in a little while.
Okay, thank you. Pick up work. Okay, so then we'll go to four then. We have the sign boards, policy DCCA. We have not, this is our first reading, or?
So, we actually haven't sat down and, we were gonna discuss this as a board, if I remember correctly.
If we wanted it or not, whatever. It was something we haven't even discussed. Like, I guess in the policy meeting, we just kinda said that's, we felt like the board should have some way in on it, so.
Yes.
What you guys think if we want. It's a recommended, it's not a required. It's up to whatever you guys think you want.
Well, you know my role, people. Can't talk about unless you make a motion, so.
Oh.
So, I mean, I, what are the feelings here?
Well, my concern with this specific thing is that what we've done is already not, like, outside of this policy. So, I don't, I mean, it would have to look different than this.
So, do you think we need some more, more work on this? And you would like, and what you were saying, what I'm hearing you saying is, us two in the policy committee want you other three to weigh in on this. Is that what I'm hearing?
I guess I would like to kinda know if you guys want this and then also what we can put in. I mean, just for the two of us to all of a sudden figure out what you think.
Well, is there, is there a need, or is it just like case by case business?
Well, that's it. Without it, I mean, I suppose we could do a case by case in here, just but, you know, give us some parameters. We don't have a need right now, no. So, we do have time. It's just that, do we set a dollar amount and do we set all these other things? And we just didn't know what any of you guys felt on it, so.
See, this authorization was super intended to do it, and I'm just wondering if, whether if that any, any of these, because that's kinda touchy if it came to the board, but I don't know.
Right, see, and that's also something we can, I guess I just didn't feel like, I kinda, I didn't feel comfortable doing it, just ourselves in the policy meeting. And I don't know if it's something that you want or not want. It's recommended, so we could table it and that, but I'd make it certain, not make it definite, like, you know, we want it next month, but something that, it was just something that they had recommended, and I guess we just thought we wanted some guidance as to where to go on.
Okay, so, I'm hearing that you, we should express our opinions to you if we think this is something you want to do. Tell what you're saying.
We can look at it, we bring it back again in a couple of months or something, and.
Again, part of procedure wise, we should not be discussing without a motion. So, let's, let's do some research on our own, everybody, and we're definitely not shutting this out. We're just gonna.
Do you have a motion?
No, we can't even table this, it's not a motion. So, what you need to do, people, is you need to do your homework and see if this is something you want and express your opinion to them and Vanessa, I would say to reach out to them if they have it. Okay? So, I can say at that point, any questions?
And maybe we can have, maybe we can call some other districts and get some ideas.
Or get some other examples and then use them to show us now, okay? All right, I'm gonna move on then. We'll go to the back, and, because you talked about, I guess it's, oh, excuse me, it's the formation of the wellness committee for discussion at a regular August meeting, we need to form a board wellness committee.
So, we had discussed policy ABEA, which is our wellness policy, and the first item it says on there is that the board shall form a district wellness committee to develop the wellness policy and perform additional duties described. The board encourages parents, students, school food service representatives, teachers of physical education, school health professionals, school board members, school administrators and the public to participate in the development, implementation and periodic review and update of the school wellness policy. So, do we, my thought is, is that, do we reach out to people? Do we have, seek volunteers? I mean, how do we go about getting this wellness committee put together? And do you put a cap on how many people are on the committee?
So, we have to have a wellness committee?
Well, according to this, required policy that committee is required.
So, let's, I would entertain a motion that we would form a wellness committee, and in that discussion, we can talk about how we wanna form that. So, I would entertain a motion that we, or form this committee?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, or form the wellness committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, probably move a second to reform as well as committee. Now, we can discuss this, we can amend this, we can table this, we can refer to a committee. Let's discuss.
I would, what I would envision personally is that we would automatically have one of the head coaches anyway, and at least one board member, and then I would think open it up to volunteers.
We should probably have principals?
One, I mean, could be both, but I mean, at least, you know, I mean, at least, I don't know.
I would say, I would say at least one principal. I would say at least one physical education teacher. So, at that point, you're not really, one of them might volunteer. They, one of them might be.
Or voluntold.
Yeah, I don't know.
And I'm hearing a community member?
I would, I would say you could have a community member or two, parent or two, student or, you know what I mean? I, it's important for, in my opinion, for students to have a voice in that.
This is a place where students could really have a pretty decent party.
Yeah.
They could come up with some ideas. Could even, like, a grade school student, like, they could, and then I got the upper. Yeah.
Like an upper elementary.
Right.
And then, so maybe have like two students or something.
Would you want the county health department involved?
If they're willing, yep.
Okay.
I think you wanna be careful how precise you make it, like you said, you know, invite policy, county health, if you put it in the policy, that's who are gonna have in the committee.
Oh, right, no.
County health committee, that's committed, so.
No, I'm thinking this list is for a target.
Yeah, and it just says the board encourages these people to be members.
Right.
Okay, so, how do you wanna proceed then? Wanna make a motion, amend this, or you're just gonna say that we are going to, the motion says right now, we're gonna form a committee with no boundaries, and so then that would mean that someone would set those boundaries.
Right, but you have to get the boundary set too and things, but, so, like, with all these people. So, what are we talking? Are we talking one or two community, because you need to kinda list, like you said, so that we just don't have, some, there's 10 community people, one is one, or, so do you want one or do you want two community members? Same with students and same with parents. We've been told it said one head coach, one board member, one principal, one PE teacher.
Well, what if we go up to, so if we say up to two community members, up to two students, up to two parents, whatever.
I would actually go up to four students.
Well, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, the students be more, true, because it involves them. And the other ones, parents and community members could be up to two?
The whole basis of the policy.
Each, two each, so.
Okay.
Right, okay.
Any other suggestions? So, there's two ways you can do this. You make amendment to the motion, and you can list the people here, we'll pass the amendment, or you can refer this to a committee, or, and then they would come back of the exact number you wrote on the next meeting. Doesn't matter to me, but we need to handle it one way or the other. It's not necessarily a policy, but if anybody.
Right, it's not a policy.
No. So, how would you like to handle it? I would entertain a motion for amendment? I would entertain a motion to.
If we amend the motion to say that the committee includes up two.
Yep, keep going.
So, then, would we say two head coaches? So, that if both of them want to?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't, you're making all of those other ones up too, okay. I thought it was just a community members.
And do we want to go up to one or up to two board members?
I would, I would say.
We can do one or two, we just can't do three. It's like we have with our other committees, we have two.
I think you'd be okay with one, of course, you can do.
Okay, two? I'm hearing two?
I don't care.
Okay, so, go ahead, Vanessa, who do you want?
Up to two head coaches, up to two board members, up to two principals, up to two piat teachers, up to two parents, two community, four students.
A district health?
Well, that's up to one district.
Yeah, one district health member, okay.
Okay, that's a committee of 16?
Up to 16.
It'll be actually seventeen with a district health member.
I thought we weren't gonna say district health. I thought we weren't gonna say that. We're gonna say district health?
Say up to.
Well, would those be concerned, community members?
All right, so, is there a second to that motion? Second to that amendment, excuse me. Okay, probably move the second of the amendment. Any discussion? Discussion, discussion. I will reread the amendment. Two head coaches, two board members, two principals, two piat teachers, two parents, two community members, four students and one county health official. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of the amendment to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is amended to add those 17 people to the committee. So, now the be, the motion reads, we will have a break, we will have, we will form a wellness committee that consists of the following 17 people, and I won't reread them again, but of those 17 people. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor of the amended motion that we have a wellness committee consisting of the 17 people listed, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Change of passes. Okay, nice job. All right.
And then, so, then.
I would assume that anyone's gotta start looking.
Yep, I can put something out, social media, school website, that type of thing, seeking volunteers.
And if it doesn't work, then you go to the next step.
Yep.
Okay.
You are doing it.
Yeah, you are doing it. Okay, all right. Um, hold, just go off.
Yes.
Back to what you're doing.
Yeah, um, so, we did our test hearing tonight. We've kinda gone through and looked at these mill levies where we think we can put them to the best use this school year. So, just kind of a rundown of this worksheet that you have in front of you. Up until this year, schools would have one general fund, but due to changes in legislation, our general fund now has been split into two, one with a cap of 60 mils and the other one with a cap of 10. That cap of 10, informally, they call the board discretionary fund. So, this worksheet kinda shows the change with each of those funds. The regular general fund with 60 in parentheses last year, our request, our requested mil rate of 70 was for $1,697,434. Obviously, dropping that 10 mils takes it down, takes that particular mil request down $211,467.50. With the addition of that board discretionary fund mil levy, which is obviously an increase of 10, that particular levy is going up from 0 to $247,661.50. Our building fund, we're sitting fairly comfortable, take the word comfortable with a grain of salt, I guess. So, we were looking at a change from our building fund, 7.05 mils. We were gonna drop it down to 5.57 mils, which is a decrease of $33,001. Special reserve didn't change a whole lot. We changed that mil rate, or requesting to change that mil rate from 1.01 to 1.02 mils, which is an increase of $720. Miscellaneous fund, so, we, essentially, we moved, we changed our levy, so we took some off the building fund and are looking to increase the miscellaneous fund from 7.05 to 9.25. Some of the rationale behind that, the big one that keeps weighing on me specifically was our increase in health insurance of 21.2%. So, bumping up our miscellaneous fund from 7.05 mils to 9.25 mils is an increase of $58,000. Overall, with our 3% cap and mil increase, that would be a increase levy of a total of $61,913. So, that is our 3% limit increase for this here. So, our request will be for a levy of $2,125,678. Questions?
We went from a mill rate of 85.11 to now it's 85.83.
Yes.
It's only .72 different, it looks like here.
It is your recommendation to pass this?
To, yes.
Okay, so let's have a motion to do that and a second, and then we can discuss questions without. So, I would entertain a motion, please.
We'll make a motion to pass it, all right.
Oh, second.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the bar. Pass the, right there, the number there as proposed by, as recommended by, to Penloch. Discussion.
Hands on the side, as far as I can tell, because they don't have much sway weight.
Right, we needed one general, but I think it was a wise decision how we did, because we do need more on general at this particular time. I mean, we're still gonna need some in building, but.
Okay. Everybody is in agreement with this work here? All right, then I am going to call discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor then of accepting this as the Harvey Public School mill levy for 20, should be 25, 26, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, 25, 26.
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, mine says 24, 25.
On the right, it says 26, proposed.
Okay, all right, 25, 26. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All votes. Okay, we have accepted Mr. Lob's request, and now, as we said, it'll be $2,125,678 as our request. Okay, before I go to our current meeting, Dave Zane, you have a request, anybody, whatever, you wanna know anybody that's going to?
Yeah, whoever is, Brad, do you need two nights?
That's to be determined, but I'll need one night for sure.
We're having a board, we have a board meeting Wednesday night, so.
No.
So, we would leave after the board meeting, right?
Okay.
Okay.